We're going to call to order the Park Township Board of Trustees meeting for August 8. Welcome and thank you all for being here. So we're going to start with an invocation from trustee Spulhoff and then we'll have the Pledge of Allegiance. So if everyone would stand that is able to.
Please join me in prayer. Our Father in Heaven, we praise your name and we seek your will tonight. Thank you for the abundant blessings you have given us. And as stewards of these blessings, may we seek your guidance. And I pray for this meeting tonight. Give the board members wisdom and guidance as we deliberate on items before us. And may every decision be righteous in your sight and for the community's benefit and for your glory. In the name of the Father and the Son and the Holy Spirit. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right. We'll go, we'll start with the approval of the agenda. Is there any additions or deletions?
Mr. Director, I'd like to make an addition if I may.
Certainly.
The addition would be the rescind of board action motion to use promotion as the preferred company to oversee pickleball tournaments.
All right, we'll make that letter J. Any other additions or deletions? Otherwise, we'll look for a motion.
Motion to approve agenda as amended.
Right. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye opposed? All right. Everyone had a chance. I'm sure to look at the minutes from the last meeting as well as the payment of the bills. If there's no questions, we'll look for a motion for approval of the consent agenda.
So you support?
Any discussion? Right. All those in favor say aye. Aye opposed? All right. And now we're going to move on to public comment. We'll open public comment. Anyone on this side? Anyone on this side? All right, we will close public comment. And we have the department reports. Some are here that are able to comment. If you have any questions, feel free. All right.
May I comment? The shares, the little paragraph about the incident that happened, that sound like quite a wild incident. Did everything get resolved as far as health and safety? I mean, were the people involved? Okay. I mean, I did see how it all ended. The one that says crash, crash, the gentleman had narcotics. Uh, yeah, it was all good. All good. Okay. All right. Thanks.
All right. Any other questions or comments? All right, we will move on to the presentation and we'll hear from Mr. Bradaveld. If you'd like to come forward and speak, that would be great.
All right. Thank you very much. Happy to come tonight and just present the year-end audit report. This is for the township's year end, March 31 of 2024. And I put the books on your, on your desk in front of you before the meeting started. So I just, first of all, wanted to thank Connie and Howard for their work in preparing. Howard doesn't do too much for the audit, other than answer questions and that kind of thing. But Connie puts a lot of work and effort into getting prepared for this and it's much appreciated. And everything is all neat and orderly when we start. We don't have to have too many entries or anything like that. So all in very good shape. So as part of an audit, what we do is come in and look at your internal controls, some compliance for the state, and then also get independent verification of the, of the financial statement amounts. So at the end of the day, we do all that work to form an opinion on your financial statements, which is on page one of the book. And it's the second paragraph down. It says in our opinion, the financial statements present fairly in all material respects the financial position of the township. So that's a good, unmodified, clean opinion and certainly what you hope for when you have an audit completed. So that's, that's, that's good news. And following the, the independent auditor's report are the financial statements put together in various sections. The first piece on pages three through eight is the management discussion and analysis. This is primarily gives you information about what's in the audit report itself. Points out a few financial highlights such as the, this is put together by management, the financial highlights are so increasing taxable values, the new construction going on with the pickleball courts. And there is the community center burnt down and it's in progress of designing a new one. So there's a lot of stuff going on at the township, especially as far as capital goes. And I'll get to more of that in just a minute. Other than that, I don't spend too much time on management discussion and analysis, but it's good information if you read through it. I like to go to the numbers, which start on page nine. Nine and 10 are called the government-wide financial statements. And this is, these are on a full accrual basis of accounting. It's called, it's to be comparable to a regular, any other business. So it includes all of the capital assets of the township, any debt of the township and that kind of thing. At March 31, there was no outstanding debt. So that's, that's one piece of good news. The, the capital assets are kind of right in the middle of the page. They total about 18 million of the township. This year, there was a lot of capital activity, about 2.3 million was added to your capital assets. There was a, a new fire truck, pickleball courts were nearly completed at the end of the year. Several vehicle purchases, playground improvements, bike paths and a lot of, just a lot of activity going on. And again, there's no debt. And at the end of the day, at the bottom there, the, the second line from the bottom is the one we really look at. And that's your unrestricted net position is a positive 12 million. So that's very good. You can see way at the top of that page, your cash is almost 22 million at the end of March. So the township's in good financial position. On page 10, that's the statement of activities. It just kind of breaks everything down by different areas. General government, public safety and public works. And you can see the third line from the bottom on the right-hand side, there are change in net position is 3 million. So it's increased by 3 million revenues over expenditures. Nothing bad so far, right? So let's look at pages 11 through 14. This is, it's, it's called modified accrual basis, but it's more, I call it the fund basis. For you guys, it's more the, it's in the same, same method that you would see it on a normal monthly or quarterly basis. It's presented with the same way. So you can see page 11, this is your balance sheet. All the funds are broken out separately. The, the left-hand column is your general fund. That's the one we pay the most attention to. It encompasses all the non-specific items. At the end of the day, the unassigned fund balance is about 3 million at the end of March. So that's again, very good. It's about 100% of your annual expenditures. Now this amount, the tax levy is, is pretty early in the year and the tax, the state shared revenue is coming in throughout the year. But this is at March 31. This all gets spent down throughout the course of the year, all the way through December, when your next tax levy hits. So, so it's good to be in good financial position at March 31. And you can see there are a lot of items set aside up above that 2.7 million. You can see there's, there's money set aside for subsequent year expenditures, which is to cover the 24, 25 budget difference. There's some pandemic-related funds set aside and, and within all of the funds, that money is all restricted for certain various activities. The community center money set aside, for example, the insurance recovery proceeds came in. Those will be used towards the, the new community center. One other thing I was going to point out here is the fund balance section, you can see it's broken down into non-spendable, restricted, committed and assigned. So the restricted piece is money that has to be spent. It's restricted by outside sources or enabling legislation, they call it. Just to be, it has to be spent on these various functions where it's classified. The committed and assigned fund balance, committed is set up by a board resolution. The assigned is set up by, by council motion or by board motion. So that's where that all is. And then if you look at the income statement related to that, it's on page 13. And you can see again, there's a very good year across all the funds. The third lineup is your net change and fund balance or your net income. You can see in the general fund, it's up 600,000. There was a new fund created this year called the Public Safety Fund. And that was formerly the Police Fund. There's now a new dedicated millage for that. Some of the general fund millage was moved over to the Public Safety Fund. So just to match the, the the voting language, it's called the Public Safety Fund now. But again, yeah, net changes in fund balance for general fund was 600,000. And these other funds also went very well. The Township Improvement Fund, there was some money spent there with capital outlay, so. And also just to make you flip way through the financial statement, if you go back to page 29. This is your general fund budget compared to actual. And you can see again, the bottom line's the same as what we just looked at on page 13. But you can see the final amended budget, the third lineup from the bottom, you were budgeting to make about 290,000 positive. And then it ended up at 635, so 342,000 ahead of what was budgeted. And you can see 70,000 of that is related to revenues and all the rest is related to just savings and various all the various departments throughout the township. There was only one area that over expended the budget by a very, very small amount, almost right in the middle of the right-hand column, $599. So that's the only thing that we had to report to the state. It's minimal. So they, they didn't get too excited about it or demand a, an explanation or anything like that. So that's good. And then page in the footnotes, just to point out a couple of them to you. Page 22, this is a note number two of statutory compliance. This is where we have to report to the state that very small over expenditure. That's required, unfortunately. And then page 25, capital assets. I mentioned that there was a lot spent on capital assets this year and you can see the additions under construction in progress of 1.6 million. That's the fire truck and the pickleball courts that were in progress at the end of March. And then in addition to that, right below that number, there's additional capital assets of 1.1 million, which was all the, the infrastructure, the bike paths, the vehicles and so forth. And then one other item on page 27, there's note number nine. This is commitments. So there's a couple of bonds that the township is committed to that are issued by the county. And we disclose those here. In addition, there is some construction commitment at the end of March to the tune of about 646,000. So that is disclosed in the statements at the end of March of 24. Upcoming for next year. There will be a new, a new standard that might change how the statements look a little bit. If you move things from major to non-major funds, won't be a big deal. We'll get that taken care of. And then in about for your 2026 year end, in two years, there's some tweaks to the financial statement format that are forthcoming, but we'll go over those with you at that time. So there is also a separate letter I put on your, your table in front of you, a two-page letter. That is basically canned information, just for your, your reading pleasure. If there were any internal control issues, if there were any significant adjusting entries, we would have to disclose those to you in that letter. And there is nothing disclosed there because there weren't any. So all in all, very good, a very clean audit and went very well. Is there any questions I can answer from anyone?
I do have a question. I don't know if you answer, if Connie answers. So on page three, it's, let's see. Bullet point number four, it said investment earnings increased by 806,000. So that's just like interest earned or whatever.
Interest rates went up significantly during the year, the past fiscal year. So yes, that is interest earned during the year. It's not just interest, it's also increase in fair value of your investments.
Declare. So it's not necessarily money. It's like if a stock went up, we made more money, correct?
Yeah, sort of.
About, well, only it's a bond. So, okay. All right. Good.
Yeah, some of it is tied to the market. Some of it is interest.
Well, I was just wondering where the money, what account that money went into, but it didn't go into any account necessarily.
If I'm correct, I mean, these are probably bonds. And so it's the, it's the present value of the bond, but it's, it's, it's irrelevant because we won't, because we'll allow the bond to mature. And once the bond matures, then we'll receive the proceeds. So the present value of the bond is current, it's not really relative, correct? Okay, so the present value could have gone up from the previous year, but we'll just wait till it shows.
Yep. Okay. Very good. Any other questions? Okay. All right. Wonderful. Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you very much.
All right. Now we're going to move on to action items. So action item A is accept the 2023, 2024 fiscal year audit. And so we will look for a motion for that. Right. Any questions or discussion? Right. All those in favor say aye. Aye opposed? All right. Very good. All right. And then proposed millage rates and public hearing. We talked about this earlier and now we have to actually vote on it. So you can see the recommendations before you. I'm assuming that came from Connie as well as manager Fink. I guess we'll look for a motion for that.
Just a question on, this, this scene, the rates on a couple of them have gone down, said due to the Headley activity, where those are the ones that slide down just a little bit by a little bit. Is that primarily the reason why you see it go down?
I'm trying to split to the 4020.
Which one?
But yeah.
Was that, that's just want to sure that. What a legacy, Mr. Headley name. How many years ago was that?
Why was it called the Headley Amendment?
Governor Headley.
Huh?
Governor Headley. Oh, it's governor?
Yeah. Thank you for that.
Well, I will point out to the residents of Park Township that in the operating millage, the proposed millage is 0.3276 mils. We could have a maximum rate of 0.9845. So note that we are not charging all we could. And that's a testament to the board. Yes. All right. Any other questions? Otherwise, we'll look for a motion.
Make a motion to approve the millage as stated.
Any discussion, questions? So this is a resolution. We don't need to do a roll call. So we'll, all those in favor say aye. Aye opposed? All right. Motion carries. And now we're going to look at letter C, this is the transfer of the excess general fund equity and cable franchise fees to the Capital Improvement Fund. But as you can see, they want to split it up to not only new construction, but maintenance of previous assets as well, correct? Okay. Do you have any comments on that?
Historically, the Capital Improvement Fund has been used mostly for new construction, but also for some renewals and replacements and stuff. But with all of the work that we're doing, particularly with this, this area right here, I wanted to make sure that we were mindful and that we kept some money aside specifically for replacements and renewals. And I thought this would be a good opportunity to do that, that wouldn't hurt too much in terms of funding new, new projects.
Very good. Any, any questions for Connie?
How are you going to keep that renewal fund separate? Is there a particular bucket you're putting that in?
Sure. There'll be a separate assigned fund balance.
Okay. So we'll see that again. That's would be a new one on the list.
Correct.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. We'll look for a motion on that.
Make motion to approve this policy change?
Any questions or discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye opposed? Right. Now we're going to look at the cemetery fee increase. So you can read through those things and if you, if you'd like to make a motion, great. If you'd like to ask some questions, either way is fine.
Just a question for manager, manager Fink. Is this a, it's a significant increase? A thousand dollars, $2,500. Could you give us a little insight on the, the, the number as compared to other cemeteries?
Yeah, it's a little higher than other cemeteries. We have not increased our rates since I've been here. So at least, at least eight years. My sense is that it goes on even longer than that. We are not charging enough to maintain those properties in perpetuity. The reality is even these numbers are probably not enough to support a perpetual care fund. We have a responsibility and a duty to maintain these pieces of property forever. And the dollars are just not there. In addition, Park Township is a desired place. Not only is it a desired place to live, but it's a desired place to live for eternity. And we are, we are, we're going to talk a little bit later in the, in the in the meeting about some upgrades that we're planning. But those, those upgrades are, there are costs associated with it. So these, these changes in fees kind of bring our costs in line and are appropriate. They were recommended by the cemetery sections. So they're a little higher than the neighboring communities, but not.
My only suggestion in the past, when we've done this, we've given notice to the residents. So they have an opportunity to purchase if they want to prior to the increase. Is there a way in our newsletter and I'm wanting to make this known to residents?
Got it.
It's going to be effective until October.
Right.
Yeah, but I'm saying if people want to come in in September, you know, and purchase some plots, it gives them the opportunity to do.
I, I I'm not suggest, I'm not, I'm not saying we can't do that. We certainly can do that. We'd have that month gap. The, the, the point is not to have an influx of people buy now so that there's not an increase in a month. The point is, is that the fund needs to support itself going forward on a long-term basis.
You don't, you usually don't have that many in the past when we've done it, you know, to come in with some people that are elderly. You come in and try to.
That's a policy decision. So I have no problem if we decide we want to do that.
Any other questions? Otherwise, I'm ignorant to when it comes to this stuff. So the perpetual care contribution, is that a annual thing?
It's every time that a plot is sold.
Oh, so you pay at that time?
Correct.
Okay.
And so that perpetual, so a portion of your money is go into a care fund that is the fund that is, that is the fund that we use to care for these properties in perpetuity.
So if I was to buy a plot in October 2, so after the price went up. So I would pay 1,000 plus I'd play, pay 425?
No, no, the, the top fees is, is the fee structure. The bottom is how much of that is going into the perpetual care fund? So it's just the top.
Okay. All right.
Existing and proposed.
See, I didn't, I didn't understand that. So I'm glad I asked. All right.
So part of it goes into the perpetual care fund so that we maintain these properties in perpetuity. And part of it goes into the existing cemetery fund, which we use for existing operations.
All right. Very good. Any, any other questions? Otherwise, we'll look for a motion.
I have to make a motion to approve the fee increase as presented effective October 1 with notice in our online newsletter of the upcoming.
Any, any questions, comments? Right. All right. All those in favor say aye. Aye opposed? All right. And more cemetery stuff. So not only are we increasing the rates, but we need more space because apparently people do want to have a plot here. So very good. I guess we'll look for a motion unless there's questions.
If I may, Mr. Chair.
Sure.
It'll be brief. So in your packet are a number of votes that the cemetery team has put together. These are the quotes that our sections have done and we'll look to the Columbarian project. We are, Lake Shore is one of our three cemeteries. Lake Wood Cemetery is our Cadillac Cemetery, if you will, or always say, should I say it, the, the cemetery of most notoriety, if you will. And we recognize that the other two cemeteries are not up to that same level of standard. We are in one more item, we're going to be talking about a very large infrastructure improvement in one of those cemeteries, which is the creation of Columbarium. And I'll explain what a Columbarium is when we get there. But one of the things that that's doing is taking up some of the land that we would have used for those plot expansions. In addition to that, Lakewood Cemetery, the, the Black Cemetery, the, the focal point cemetery is running out of space. There's not much space left in Lakewood. And within a few years, that's probably going to be all taken up. We need to start thinking about what is our next expansion when Lakewood is no longer full. And that is then Lake Shore Cemetery. One of the things that we want to do to improve the aesthetic at Lake Shore Cemetery is, is both expand into the existing area that we have, but also improve the irrigation of that expansion and really spruce up that cemetery. So it has the same aesthetic as Lake Wood, which is our prominent cemetery. And so what we are proposing is both an expansion and irrigation work in Lake Shore Cemetery to improve that aesthetic. And, and so once, once Lake Wood is full up, the Columbarium will still be there. But from a plot perspective, once that's full, then Lake Shore becomes the prominent cemetery that people use. And so we're going to, we're going to start really focusing there as.
So that's just a clarification on Lake Shore, Lakewood, and then the one way out. It, you got Lakewood, Lakewood and 168, right?
Yeah, it's like, yep.
That's the, as you call it, the best or the most mature.
Prominent, yep.
Prominent. You're talking Lake Shore, which is the one up 168.
Correct.
Which it seems to be half full.
Correct.
In the expansion for the Columbarium, the, the building or the, how do you say?
Columbarium is going at Lake Wood.
That's at Lakewood. Okay. So then you're saying the Lake Shore is where we're going to put some effort into sprucing it up.
Correct. Additional expansion, irrigation, sprucing that up and, and start utilizing Lake Shore and utilizing it more from the perspective of improving that aesthetic. And then hopefully over time, those two things even out. And we may even come back at some point and say, hey, the prices at Lake Shore should be more in line with Lakewood.
Is the one on the corner of 168 and New Allen Street full next to the water plant?
It is not, but it is, but it is almost full. There's, there's, there's little areas around it that are still open. It is, we very rarely get anyone that requests that cemetery because there is no irrigation there. It's of the three cemeteries, it, it probably needs the most work. It's the most complicated in order to improve because of the waterline situation. Although it is right next to a massive water plant, it is actually the most difficult one to get irrigation and water to for a number of site issues. For a number of site issues. Um, and so the plan is also to improve that one. And, and I have communicated to the cemetery sextons, and I will now communicate to this board. That one needs to be improved. Some of our prominent former, um, uh, representatives of our community who served. Uh, are buried there. Uh, it is where the oldest cemetery is, uh, where some of our, uh. Uh, older residents are, are buried, uh, and we need to, we need to improve that one, but it, it. It's so far, we don't have a plan for it. We were hoping to have a plan for it, but I think that plan is gonna come next year, or later on in this year.
On the Lake Shore site, since it's so close to my house, on the, uh, north side, excuse me, the south side and on the east side. Is there room for expansion or property acquisition?
Uh, I don't know about property acquisition, but there is, on the, for Lake Shore, there's significant room for expansion.
On the left side of the drive?
Correct.
Well, I guess the question would be long-term, if you have no more space. There's, there seems to be an open lot or wooded lot to the south.
Should be invested.
And I wonder if there's some extra space to the east. Should, I would investigate that if you, you know. If you need one to expand, that might, if that is the one that would be logical to expand as well.
Absolutely. I think we should think about that. And the work that we're doing today will probably set us up for about a decade.
Is the Lakewood, the Lake one, Lakewood one Hundred Sixty-eighth and Lakewood. Is that house, do we have a, a opportunity to put a first right to purchase that home to expand to Hundred Sixty-eighth? To come to the east?
I, I can look into.
I don't know what fellowship's prob, uh, opportunity is. I mean, you can go to that church, but. I, I don't know how far their lot line goes too, but if you could go to the east to Hundred Sixty-eight, again, that's another opportunity for expansion. I'm not ready to die yet, but, uh, this has been a discussion of identity, actually. Where, where do we wanna go?
Yeah, good point. Thank you.
Oh, yeah, yeah, that, yes, 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 Brian, we do, we do wanna go.
Right, would anyone like to make a motion?
You, you knew this one, you're gonna go on without somebody saying something.
I would just open myself up.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the improvements as stated. Second.
Right, any questions, discussion?
We're just talking right now of Lake, Lake Shore.
Correct. Just Lake Shore expansion and irrigation, not columbarium.
Any other questions? Right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Alright.
And Mr. Spohoff, please hold us accountable to the conversation of, um, Ventura Cemetery. Because it needs to be improved. Thank you.
Alright, now we're gonna go on to the columbarium project.
And so, if I may, Mr. Chair.
Sure.
Um, so, one of the things that might come up, uh, actually a year or two ago. Um, is, uh, the desire for a different product offering. And so, um, one of the things that is happening in the world of, um. Burials, uh, and, uh, is, is the desire for people to be cremated. We do, we allow cremation, uh, in a plot, you know, so, so you can be cremated and, and be buried in a plot. And you can have multiple people in a plot, um, I believe it's, uh, up to two in a plot. Um, but we don't have, uh, a columbarium. A columbarium is essentially. Uh, an outdoor mausoleum, uh, similar to the, the city of Holland has, uh, a traditional mausoleum. Where you go inside of a building, um, and, uh, and the individuals are resting in that facility. A columbarium is a stone kind of element. It can be a circular thing. It can be a wall thing. It can be a curvature thing. Um, but various designs, uh, uh, exist, um, and they are essentially, um. Uh, uh, places, uh, to have ashes, uh, those who are cremated rest. Um, they are, uh, much more cost-effective. Uh, not only for a resident who is going through that process because they don't have all the burial fees and whatnot. But also from a township perspective, they take up less land, less maintenance, um, less long-term. Uh, issues in terms of, uh, 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 just maintaining the site. My worry, um, is that I'm trying to think about what's gonna happen in ten, twenty, thirty, forty years. Because the township has to maintain these cemeteries in perpetuity. And there are many communities all across the state of Michigan that have cemeteries that they have to maintain, but have no more plots, and so they have no more revenue coming in. And so it becomes a struggle. And so I'm trying to think of, how can we improve that ROI? And so one of the suggestions that came to us, and it's a great suggestion, it's a movement in the industry. Many communities have columbarium, the city of Holland does a columbarium. Uh, I believe Zealand Township, yeah, I think it's either Zealand Township or Zealand City, I, maybe it's Zealand Township. Has a columbarium and many organizations, communities are looking at columbariums. So it is a common thing. Um, and we are proposing a columbarium project at Lakewood Cemetery to begin. Uh, potentially this year, depending on bids and depending on construction tables or timetables. Uh, but certainly if not this year, uh, first thing spring of next year, uh, to begin that construction. Uh, the cemetery team, uh, Dave and Lee Davis, uh, both of them have done a phenomenal job. Dave is our, Dave is our new cemetery sexton. And he's really put together a great package, um, to, uh, provide to you all. And so you see the costs. Um, you see the, the, the breakdowns of where the funding would come from. Uh, this is something that I, um, have been working on for quite a while and, and give it a strong recommendation of improvement.
Right, I will look for a motion.
Is there opportunity to understand, uh, where? Where it would be placed on that site?
Yeah, and I'm looking through the packet here, and I, I, I thought as I was going through the packet, there was all kinds of cemetery stuff in here. And I'm seeing that it is, uh, the designs and all of that are not included in the packet. So I'm, I'm happy if you would like to postpone that and we can get you more information, but there's a full design. Um, uh, there's a full design document around it, uh, location, uh, all of that. That's all, we have all of that. It's just not.
Given that this is kind of like the first blush, would it be inappropriate to table this for a month?
Not at all. And I think that I'm looking at this and I realize I, I was under the assumption that all of that was in the packet. Um, but I only see the memo here and not the supporting documentation, so I think that's appropriate.
Look for that motion.
My apologies, that's on me.
Postpone this discussion for next month's meeting.
Support.
Right, any discussion? I have one question, uh, and that is, so you pronounce that niches, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, so that, based on cost, would be essentially three hundred and eight thousand. Um, dollars that it will bring in, the cost is two hundred and twenty-eight. Does that extra money get put in a, uh. Uh, fund somewhere so we can use that as the maintenance of the columbarium?
Yeah, so, well, the, the extra money, that would be, uh, Connie's decision of where she would best feel it appropriate. That money stays in the cemetery fund, there's no question. Doesn't go into the general fund. It's a cemetery fund. That's the way you have it set up, Connie, is it's, um, if, if not, that's the way it should be set up, that it's cemetery fund. Cause it's paying back the cemetery fund purchase, um, but there are some of those monies that go into the perpetual care fund. Right, when you buy a columbarium inch, and then some that don't. We could have all of the overage. We could have all of the. Profit going into the perpetual care fund. But some, you know, Connie, how did you have it?
Right, so we had, um, if you go back to the cemetery motion that we had, we do have five hundred dollars of the two thousand dollar fee going to perpetual care.
So then fifteen hundred goes into the cemetery maintenance, which is the fund that maintains the cemetery.
Okay.
So I have a question, this is all coming to me too. So two thousand dollars for an inch, how many niches are in it?
Hundred fifty-four.
Yeah.
Hundred fifty-four.
Hundred fifty-four, and is it? One person ashes per inch?
Two. Two, you can do two.
Okay, so twice as expensive as a lot?
Yes, but there's also significant savings because you don't have the cost of. Um, so actually, when you look at, when you're planning your, um, your end-of-life planning. You will find that this is actually a more cost-effective way of that process than the traditional there. The cost, there's an improvement from the cost, and then we'll. So, and we'll get more information, more background information.
Alright, any other questions? Alright, we will, uh, vote then. All those in favor of tabling this till next month, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Alright, very good. Now we're gonna move on to the food truck ordinance. And, so, um. I think most people love a good food truck. So thank you to all, uh, the planning commission for the hard work. Did you wanna make any comments on this, Terry, or Mika?
I'm just, I can introduce it, but I'm also just here to answer any questions.
Alright.
Take it, alright. So this food truck ordinance is intended to allow food trucks in Park Township. Right now, food trucks aren't allowed anywhere in Park Township, so we've had a general expressions of interest from people. Both from people who would like to bring their food trucks into Park Township and those who would like to have a few more dining options, since we don't have a lot of restaurants. So, uh, there's also interest in, uh, this property as well, with the pickleball courts, with the community parks, to have. Food trucks out there for events, just for people to enjoy. So this ordinance breaks down. Uh, where you can have them in different zoning districts. It allows them pretty much everywhere in the township, but with different regulations. So obviously, much more strict in neighborhoods, so you can do them for things like block parties. Um, maybe one or two days, get a few for a graduation party, that sort of thing. Uh, food trucks are pretty heavily regulated. I don't know, heavily regulated, but they're regulated by both the state and the county, depending on what kind of, um, food truck it is. So we're mainly just looking at the locational aspects and to say, you do have to have those appropriate licenses and permits. So that's what's included in that ordinance.
Alright, any questions? Otherwise, we will look for a motion. Alright, any other discussion?
Uh, uh, I just wanna say thank you to the planning commission to get ahead of this issue before it becomes an issue. So, well done.
Yeah.
I just have one question in the ordinance. Uh, page one thirty-three, um, number three. Um, in residential area, one food truck may be present for a maximum of three non-essential plates.
So the.
You have a garage, big subdivision garage sale. They have to skip a day in between.
That is, I think that would be under the, um. Occasionally permitted to operate in the right of way for community events like block parties and garage sales and whatnot, so. Yeah, the intent was that people could have it for, uh, like an individual family event, like you'd have a caterer. But not bother your neighbors with it for days on end.
I'll just comment regarding the fair. The fair would be grandfathered, so they would not have to go through the licensing for. Food trucks during the fair, uh, and it's actually, uh, correct me on this one, Dan, if I'm wrong, but it's actually the fair property, is it not? Not necessarily the event.
Yeah, so, the, the fairgrounds, right, and as we discussed at the planning commission, technically, the township doesn't have to follow your own zoning ordinances. So you would be exempt regardless. You choose to follow them. And the Ottawa County Fairgrounds have had food trucks on them prior to the adoption of zoning ordinance. So they are not conforming uses that would be permitted to continue. They don't necessarily need to have a license.
Any other questions?
And, and let me just interject there too, that, cause I saw Howard kind of, they would still need to be licensed for health department. Those types of, as, as Mick indicated, being recommended by the state government. That still doesn't happen. But not have to come into township for.
In the fair board coordination handle.
I have one other question. Um, beer tents and stuff don't fall under this, right? Right, okay, cause I know the Catholic Church sometimes has their fall festivals, they have beer tents and animal things. So that doesn't fall.
Alright, um. So this is a first, because this is an ordinance, this is a roll call, and our, uh, valued clerk is not here. So, do you call it out, or do I call it out? Why don't you call that? Yeah.
Yes.
Yes.
Tony John.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, thank you. Alright, and now we're going to go on to H, uh, ordinance to change certain offenses to. Municipal civil infraction and. Dan, if you don't mind, can you explain? What we're changing to, what the difference is?
Yes, I can. Thanks for asking. Uh, about a month ago, maybe a little more than a month ago. Um, Deputy Jones brought to my attention that he had issued a citation for loud muffler. And magistrate Helder indicated that under our ordinances. Those things that are civil infractions have to be specifically listed. The way our court of ordinance reads, if it's not specifically listed as a civil infraction, it's a misdemeanor, meaning a criminal trial. For a loud muffler and other potential offenses. So, he asked if I could help the board potentially change the muffler issue to a civil infraction. So somebody gets, you know, effectively a ticket for the loud muffler rather than a criminal record, which makes perfect sense. As I was doing that, I spoke with Howard and said, hey, there are some other provisions in this ordinance. That likewise should be changed to municipal civil infractions. So that people don't have a criminal record for them, whereas others probably should remain as misdemeanors. So if you look on page one, I think it's one forty-three or maybe one forty-four. There's a chart that shows what is being changed. So the noise control ordinance. That would be changed to a municipal civil infraction rather than a misdemeanor. A breach of the peace would remain a misdemeanor. This ordinance would not change that. Permitting a gathering of disorderly persons would change to a municipal civil infraction. Again, similar to a ticket. Public intoxication would remain a misdemeanor. Disturbing a religious worship or jostling would both change to municipal civil infractions. And jostling is kind of like getting up in somebody's face. Uh, and, and kind of like getting in their personal space and kind of antagonizing somebody, almost getting them to wanna fight. Doing that would be a municipal civil infraction, but if you actually fight, it would remain a misdemeanor. You, you've kind of got assault issues there. Uh, indecent or obscene conduct and mirinating or defecating in public. Would both remain misdemeanors. Then we would change the mufflers, which is what inspired this ordinance in the first place. And fireworks would remain a municipal civil infraction. Uh, that was the most recent one that we added a couple of years back on the state, said you can regulate them outside of certain timeframes. And we did that as a municipal civil infraction, and that's what led magistrate Helder to say, hey, these other ones are all misdemeanors. With all of that, I also wanna point out one other thing, because it's, it's my understanding that on the agenda. Or at some point, there might be discussion about Beechwood Church and the noise ordinance. If you're going to be making changes to the noise ordinance, you may wanna wait on this too. Howard shaking his head, no. Uh, the, the reason for that, and, and you can always change the noise ordinance at another time. But you would have to publish this ordinance. Um, and I will tell you, I, I got this to Julie last week. To go out with the, uh, packet. And, and Howard asked, does it need to go out right away? And I recommended that it would come to you this month rather than waiting until next month. Because you're likely to still have loud mufflers or other types of things as summer continues. And that will allow your community. And that will allow your community police officers to issue civil infractions for those instances.
And the reason why I was trying to shake my head on the Beechwood is not that you wouldn't necessarily change the noise ordinance at some point in the future. But that that wouldn't likely happen tonight, that tonight is a discussion topic. Um, and I wouldn't wanna hold up this ordinance, because I know that loud mufflers is an issue. And Deputy Jones um, needs to have that ability among those loud mufflers. So I I as really, that's why I was shaking my head, is I wouldn't wanna hold this up. I'd say just publish this, and if we have to change it, we can, uh, after the fact related to Beechwood. So that was my thought process.
Right, any questions?
And what's the difference between a civil infraction and a misdemeanor?
The difference is with a misdemeanor, somebody will actually have a criminal record. Uh, the trial is a little bit more elaborate. People are less likely to plead responsible or guilty to a misdemeanor than responsible for a ticket. Um, and and again, it goes on their criminal record. The municipal civil infraction, actually, the fine, try remember, the initial fines fifty dollars or hundred or two fifty. The fine might be around the same place. Typically, the the judges for these types of offenses, depending on how serious it is, might not give any time. For a misdemeanor to be incarcerated, but it could be anywhere from like thirty days to twenty days, sort of matter. The civil infraction is basically like getting a a ticket. So if people pay it, generally, they can fight it. If they fight it, there's a smaller hearing, it's not nearly as extensive or expensive for the township to go through those hearings. Compared to a criminal trial.
So from a policy perspective, what's the difference to the board? So this is interesting, so a number of years ago, I was in a community, um, and it's not that uncommon, it's a little bit more uncommon today. But a a community that did not have civil infractions, everything was done as Michigan, as municipal misdemeanors. Practically speaking, from a policy perspective, if you have to go through a misdemeanor process. Because somebody hasn't cut their lawn, it's gonna take you a significant period of time. And so the enforcement of that is very challenging. Now, some communities have taken the approach of they're gonna keep that miserable mis- misdemeanor. Because they they say, hey, well, if you, uh, i- i- if we're really gonna go after you, it better be enough to go after you for. Um, and there was individuals who didn't wanna change it, because, well, he didn't want anybody to get in trouble. But uh, from a policy perspective, a lot of it just comes down to time of enforcement. And ability to enforce something that is the rule in the township.
When would this, because we had to publish it, when would it go into effect?
Thirty days.
So really, summer's over by then, there's a month, the problem's gonna be if we wait.
Summer wouldn't be entirely over, it'd be getting close to being over.
This this is not a policy change from anything we've done, this this came up because of a cleanup issue. We've always had municipal civil infractions, or we've had municipal, shouldn't say we've always had. We've had municipal civil infractions for quite some time, so this is not, this is not a a big policy shift from what we have been doing. Um, this is um, codifying honestly what we have been doing. Um, and wasn't there, Deputy Jones, when I, when I chatted with you, there was something about that it was. Had to be put in kind of the automatic ticket system, and that's one of the reasons why this came up. Because you, instead of writing it on our ticket book, that it it would be in the sheriff's car. And kind of an automatic, you press a button and it's in your ticket system.
Correct, we all, we all typically handle that case in our computer system.
And. And so if it's not in their system as a municipal civil infraction, all of the things that we have, it's difficult for them to enforce it. And so our enforcement on Ottawa Beach Road becomes less effective. So, but this is not a significant policy shift from anything we've been doing.
Any other questions? I have one, um, is there a difference between disturbing religious worship and preventing religious worship?
The way I would distinguish those two, Jim, is that to prevent religious worship might be before the worship starts in your. Kind of being a jerk to prevent it from actually starting, disturbing it, it would have been going on, so in other words. Um, i- i- it might be interrupting and disrupting a communion. Versus stopping the service from beginning in the first place.
Right, and is there different degrees of disturbing?
Under the ordinance, no.
Okay. So someone could potentially walk into the same place of worship, week after week, and they would simply get a ticket.
Correct, although under the municipal civil infraction, we also can ask the court to sort of. Give injunctive relief.
Right.
And what would happen is probably after the second, maybe third time at most. The judge would issue an order to knock it off. And if the person doesn't knock it off and does it for that third or fourth time, depending on when the judge issues that injunction. It's not just a violation of your ordinance, it becomes a violation of that court order. Which is contempt of court, which is gonna get them put in jail.
So same thing could be said for jostling and mufflers and fireworks.
Correct, okay, exactly, so if, exactly, so if if. The Ottawa County Sheriff's deputies have the same person pulled over time and time again, they're not fixing their muffler. We issue two or three of these citations, the judge can order that person to get it fixed, and if they don't, the next one is in contempt of court.
Okay.
Okay, very good, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. All right, any other questions?
Yeah, district court question, um, presenting uh, either one of these to a judge, is it the same level of judge? To the district.
It goes to district court, it could be in front of the magistrate, or it could be in front of one of the district court judges.
Okay, thank you. Done matter.
Right, any other questions or comments, otherwise we will look for a motion to accept the changes.
Like we motion to accept the changes proposed. Sport.
Right, any discussion?
Just make sure you do a roll call vote, because this is.
Yep, I was remembering, thank you though, all right.
He Jones.
Sport.
Sport.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. All right, now we're gonna move on to. Some changes in the. Building interior as opposed to addition and adding on to the building. So uh, manager think, do you wanna speak to this?
Yeah, the only uh, notable, well, the notable item here is I I really have moved away from expanding this building. Um, I do not think we should expand this building until such a time as we understand what is happening with the community center. And um, the elements that are being moved into that facility. Um, I think doing anything uh, other than that would not be fiscally prudent. Um, and potentially would uh, result in quite a bit of waste of dollars. Um, expansion of this building is gonna be quite expensive on a cost per square foot basis. Not to mention, you're gonna have kind of significant disturbance uh, from those in the office. Uh, it's not to say that we don't need more space, I acknowledge and recognize that as well. Um, I think one of the solutions that from a interim perspective is to take the existing break room. Um, that is in uh, the offices and convert that into uh, office space. Uh, and then there's a space in the back that has been used at one of the hallway spaces. And convert that also to uh, kind of a quasi-office. It won't have drywall walls, uh, but it'll have partition, uh, cubicle partitions that will almost go to the ceiling. So it functions as an office, and I think that at this point, that is the best solution that we have. That gives us a a bit of time to breathe uh, and to um. Uh, accommodate uh, the additional staff that we have approved, um, and that are coming on board. Uh, but it also allows us to think through, what is the new community center look like, what additional staff is going in there? And then the room that we are in right now is a massive footprint that could be utilized if. And my thought process is we move the board of trustees, the planning and the ZBA. So we move the functionality of this room to the new community center. And uh, that then frees up quite a bit of additional space in Township Hall. That to me seems like a much better fiscal uh, approach uh, than, you know, busting out this building. And who knows how much that would cost, so that's my recommendation in front of you. We have a lot going on right now, and we have a tremendous amount of construction projects and issues that are on our plate. We only have one quote, I'm not suggesting that we should only have one quote, I realize that this is something we should. Would be ideal to get additional quotes from, but I'm just acknowledging that there's one in the packet uh, from a capacity and 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 time perspective. Um, they are a reputable company, it's West Michigan Office Interiors. Um, they've quoted both the furniture and the um, uh, the the um. Uh, the partitions, uh, there's some additional quotes in there that are needed for um, some countertop type stuff. And some uh, uh, glass, uh, uh, you know, work that needs to happen. Uh, and a little bit of electrical that is on your desk. So what I'm asking for is that uh, you approve um, the quotes that add up to sixteen, uh, three thirty-five. Uh, and then probably, I would say, add, let's say, five thousand dollars of contingency. That should cover the additional work that we would need for the laminate, the glass and the electrical that's in front of you. And give us a little bit of a. Um, so uh, that would be my recommendation.
Just for clarification, because you use some different terms, one, you said the break room. Um, and you also said the conference room.
That was my question.
Is it the conference room or is it the break room space?
The break room, the the break room space, the fishbowl.
Okay, isn't, I I always saw that as a conference room. Okay, okay.
Sees the conference room as the the as the room.
Okay.
Yeah, that's what your executive summary says is the conference room. That was a little confusing, thank you.
So that's why I was, okay, good, so it's the. Break room. In there, so, okay.
Three? Okay, the maps were kind of confusing with language, plus Michelle's office.
Correct.
So we'll be having really four. That's a pretty good price for the.
It is.
Yeah.
Compared to what we were going to spend on a potential building expansion, I think this is very, very prudent, so I make a motion to approve. Uh, the bids as stated with a five thousand dollar. Uh, addition to cover the additional quotes as uh, on our diets and. Proceed as. As needed, as quickly as you can.
All right, uh, any, uh, any comments, discussion?
Yes. I'm trying, I I, well, you all should know that I had a conversation with Jan and said that. If I get into a real bind, would I be able to have her space? And she uh, uh, graciously said yes, uh, that she would do that if I needed it. And so so far, I don't think I need that. Um, but.
We're we're moving it to the roof, right?
And we will, and we will give her a red stapler. It's an insight who we were having.
We gotta come on over here.
One discussion point, I think the the doors, put on put in the fishbowl, make those offices really difficult to use. And I think that we should spend some extra money and turn those doors into sliders.
We were gonna remove the door.
Okay, so the doors won't, they're shown, but they won't physically be there.
Correct, we, the the thought process is to remove the doors, we actually thought about moving the doors. But then that gets into construction and just take the doors off.
All right, good, thanks.
Great, any other questions? Discussion?
You, maybe sliders? Yeah, we'll look at that.
No, you wouldn't not be able to.
You have to be inside of it, have to be a thin slider, kind of like a barnyard kind of thing. Maybe, we'll look through, you got five thousand dollars, so we'll see if. You know, it's little things here and there, come on.
All right, uh, any other comments, discussion?
Johnny's worried, we're spending too much money.
Yeah, here's what you have to spend. All right, well, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, all right. All right, now we're gonna move on to letter J. Um, I mean, uh, you saw what this is about, or heard what this is about, I'm not sure what the impetus is. So we would like to talk about that.
Yeah, thank you, um, there is a document that uh, on your desk. And it shows this many meeting minutes of uh, meeting that was conducted on August eighth of this year. And then attached to it also is a um, memo of recommendation that originally came from from Brian. And what that did is said that in. If you go back, his recommendation was that we would use Promotion uh, Limited. Uh, to be an oversight to. Uh, to tournaments. As you, as you, you recall, we're also using Promotion to be the. Company that the recreation department is using to allow. Uh, the mechanism for sign up for all the recreational activities that take place. Whether it be Little League or or soccer or all that. So it was seemed to be a natural sit- situation to continue to use them. Uh, for uh, pickleball, and they are using that for pickleball for. Open play and and reserving the courts. But we're finding out that using them for a tournament is probably not a necessity. That that they be the sole vendor, so to speak, for oversight of the tournaments. And it's really not an oversight, oversight is a incorrect terminology. What it is, is is they're really the operations manager, if you would, for the pickleball tournament. So for Park Township saying point, we basically are renting. The pickleball courts, let's say, to a third party, and let's use what we've currently working on, which is Rotary. So we have a a lot of understanding of of what's that is going to recall or or include. Uh, and so that's the contract, but the contract in terms of operations of the pickleball tournament itself. Is not a park township responsibility, it's really Rotary's responsibility to coordinate that function. And they can do that by hiring someone to do that. We kind of forced the issue here by this motion that we made that says. If you're going to use a tournament, if you're gonna provide, if you're going to use our courts or tournament. Then you have to use Promotion as the operating vendor.
Actually, it doesn't.
I'm sorry?
It doesn't. It says preferred.
Yes, it's it says preferred.
But when that came out, I made a specific uh, point, that if the APA wanted to come and. Run a tournament in our courts, we would not say Promotion had to do that. Everyone agreed at that time, and that's why it says preferred and not mandated. So um, if you wanna change the word preferred, that's fine, but just understand that's why it says preferred and not. Has to, because you're using two different words there.
And were you, and 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 that's a great point, Jim, and I'm glad you brought that out. Because w- we read that and said, what does that really mean? And to to us, it said, that's really our preferred or or designated group. And if that, if that's not true, then yes, then I would say the easiest way to. To solve this issue that we currently have, it is to just make another motion. Adjusting or modifying what's said here with with different terminology, to to make sure that that's clear. And if everyone else is clear on that, and that's not an issue, that then this discussion can cease.
Yeah, I know ultimately, I, if I'm remembering correctly, and Brian, you can help us with this. Uh, you were going to determine who was actually going to manage the tournament. Um, I know when we talked about this, there was questions about whether do we need to, who's gonna take care of trash pickup? Who's gonna take care of all of that stuff? And that's why, because they've run tournaments before, that was the preferred company to use. And that's why, because they've run tournaments before, that was the preferred company to use. But if someone actually wanted to do something different, they could. And ultimately, Brian was given the. Um, uh, charge to be the arbiter of that. If we want to do that differently, we can, but just understand. Uh, all of that.
Could we change the motion possibly as the preferred but not required?
And me, I mean, if, if you, if, if that's confusing, great. You can, you can do anything you want, because we're the board, and if we want to change the wording, so it's very specific. I'm fine, I, I read that as, no, it's preferred, but we don't have to. But if, if it's helpful for others to understand that it's not required, then by all means, let's. Have a motion to change that word.
I'm open to leaving it or changing it. I, I think we, if we all understand what the intent and of how it's written. Is, I'm fine with it the way it is, if we think certification is helpful, I'm okay with that too.
Alright, will we understand this five years from now?
Well, that's a question.
Okay, so if we're not sure we're gonna understand it five years from now, then let's change it.
We will have set precedence, so that. Might be the, the ruling case here.
Do you want to make a motion?
Uh, I'll just leave it to, to the board if they want to make a motion.
You are the board.
Other members of the board.
Okay, okay.
But if they, if they choose not to use Promotion, then there's responsibility that goes along with that. So then where does that responsibility get articulated?
Yeah, I think, I think maybe. Uh, Brian has to come up with, okay. These are the things that are required that you do, and if someone doesn't do that. They may not be managing a, uh, tournament in our township again.
So Promotion Pickleball doesn't actually do the trash and.
Okay.
Promotion, so let me just clarify here a little bit. One of the reasons why, uh, this is coming in front of you is because I also. Uh, interpreted it and remembered as Promotion Pickleball was the, was the vendor that we had to use, because. If you go back to Brian's original memo and how that was written, uh, you'll see, um, that that is in that memo. Um, and, um, so I didn't recall that you didn't have to use Promotion Pickleball. I was always under the assumption. That any tournament happening in our township had to go through Promotion Pickleball. Now. Promotion Pickleball doesn't run the tournament. They don't do the trash, they don't do the parking, they don't do any of that. They set up the brackets. They decide who plays who. And who gets what medal based on the, the actual tournaments. They do, when Terry says operations, I need to make another clarification, it's really operations of. Setting up of the pickleball side of it. It's not operations of the whole tournament. And so, um, they just, that, I hope that clarifies things. It's more about a bracket. Kind of creation and, and, um, and who plays who and what the levels are and things of that nature. As opposed to sponsorship.
Okay, that's helpful.
So. They don't do like getting food trucks and they don't do picking up their, who's responsible next?
The organization, whoever, so what we, what we did was we said we were gonna have three tournaments. Only one organization, and this is where it gets a little bit complicated, and for full disclosure. Terry is on the Rotary Club and I'm the president of the Rotary Club, so. Full disclosure for everyone, throw it out there, you know, just so anybody, everybody's aware of that. Hundred percent of the funds of this tournament go for charities, charities. Whether it be charities for local, uh, kids charities and international, so hundred percent of it is community based. Or not community, all in our township, but. Um, so, but to answer your question, the organization that signs up for the tournament is responsible for all of that. So for, in this instance Rotary, Rotary is responsible for dealing with all the parking. Rotary is responsible for, for ensuring that trash gets picked up. Rotary is responsible for making sure that there are sponsorships and. There are, you know, if they want food trucks and we have to get all the contracts for all of that. The Promotion Pickleball side was always on the running of the tournament day to day. You know, this person is playing, this person getting this medal and this bracket and so on and so forth. And they would also then, um, uh, they would also, uh, promote that. Uh, to their pickleball community as well. So the other stuff that, the, the, the broader kind of tournament operation, that's on the organization.
And we, do we have a contract drawn up then that they signed and agreed it?
Who's Promotion Pickleball or the organization? We don't, because we have been, we have been, um, challenged. Because there's been a, a difference of opinion of whether or not we should even do a tournament. And, uh, we understand and respect that difference of opinion of. Hey, it may be too late, we're, and, and it's too, we're too far into the summer. Uh. And so that has, that difference of opinion has bogged down the process. And so we have not been able to, uh, we have not been able to, um, uh, get to that point. Cause we'd still been trying to figure out how do people sign up? And because we were always under the assumption that people are signing up through Promotion Pickleball. We couldn't start the process. And so that's where we are, there's a bottleneck, and now. Promotion Pickleball is, is, is essentially saying, hey, they're not comfortable with. The Rotary Tournament because they don't, because they think it's too last minute or that we're too far along. Um, and so they indicated, okay, well, there's, we're, we're, you know. That's our opinion and we, uh, it's Terry and I. Uh, thought that that was the board's directive, that it had to go through Promotion Pickleball, so that's where the bottleneck occurred. Does that make sense?
But, but they, coming back to your question, the answer is yes, we will have a contract between. Part Township and any, or any organization that decides to run the tournament to, to. Right, exclusively working that out, because in reality, if they commit to using the, using the. Uh, courts for two days and gonna pay for it, we're expecting that, hey. Whether or not they use it or not. That's a, that's gonna have to be on their own. And so the answer to your question is absolutely has to be in writing. And it has to be then a contract with that. Organization, i.e. Rotary, with whatever organization they. Select to be the ones that would run the bracketing and the sign up and the promotion and all that.
And if, and if, and if that organization just chooses to do it themselves, then it's, it's not successful. Then that's on the organization and the organization of whoever's putting on the tournament, well. And nobody want to go to that tournament again next year.
And I think in the contract, organizations are very good. You know, they're very good, but I think we also need something in the contract, like if, you know, it isn't done. The speed will be the charge. You know, we have to.
It's, I think, based on this discussion that just happened. It just, it feels like there's just a lot of unknowns around this all of a sudden. And while I, I don't really have a problem with the language in the motion that was made. I do think that we might be very wise to delay any tournaments this year and really put some work into. What does that contract look like? And what kind of, so that we can be very clear with whoever it is that wants to quote unquote have a tournament. As to what our expectations are in the care of the facility and those kinds of things. Um, whether, and it, right, it can stay right in there, it's your choice. You want to use Promotion, you can use them, but there's. Way more things that you're responsible for than just that. And it, it just feels like we, we should be doing a better job. We've got the pickleball course, that's great. But, but now we've got to do the, the work to make it sustainable for the future. It feels like we, so, somebody, Brian, I don't, maybe that you. Go back and, and really kind of put this holistic approach around. If someone does want a request to do a tournament, here's how that process looks, here's how it works, here's the obligations that they're bound by.
You're very perceptive, that's exactly right. We're, we're, we're earning, that's what we're learning. And, and we're, we're not really structured very, very well yet.
Right.
Um, we will have to make it this week, being Rotary will have to make a decision literally within. A, a week to whether or not this can happen. This is of things that have fallen through the floor this week. Which is, which is, which is with, with Promotion. And, and actually Promotion is recommending that we not have any tournaments this year. And so, and because, because they feel as, as Howard's shared. That the timeline at this point is too, too tight, and one of, one of the difficulties was. It is communication that did not or did happen and somebody dropped the ball about all the. Minutia of details were communicated. But not. Formally, you know, written, communication wise, and so. I, I, I'd like to table your, your thought about postponing it, then, and let us go forward to see if we can get this done, but. If it doesn't happen. Uh, by a week from tomorrow, it's, it's, it's out of the question.
Okay, alright, lest anyone think I'm being unfair. Um, the Chair of our Planning Commission had something to say. And I'm doing that because he's the Chair of our Planning Commission and for that reason.
Alright, thank you. It may be covered in there, but I haven't, haven't heard any mention of insurance, which we. Alternative for me. Always had to provide our own. It wasn't through the park, so.
Township, the township would, um, and I believe it's actually in organizations. The township would require insurance, the minimum insurance that we would require on an event like this is a million dollar policy. So that, that is, that is absolute, um. Yes, there's no question about that. Any, any organization doing an event like that would have to come up in the future.
Alright, so.
We're trying to do some research and get some samples.
Okay, I would say the. Uh, I guess unless the board wants to see a contract, that would be between the manager and. Brian, it's not something that the board needs to worry about coming up with a contract.
Here is because we were miss, uh, we misunderstood that that was the directive.
Okay. But if we want to be clear, let's change the wording.
If I may.
Yeah, please.
I, I, I think the, the opportunity to do something less formal, we, that, 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 when you say tournament. Expectations are extremely high as far as excellence of what, how it's run. And so I would, I would, uh, take the pressure off and encourage. Uh, Rotary to have a informal, come as you are. Saturday afternoon, enjoy it, and then have a full blown. Tournament with a capital T next spring. And I think the opportunity to, to do it right. Um, is, is still there, and I, I, I don't think you gotta put this much pressure on anybody. You know, you can blame them or blame us, or, you know, I, I think at the end of the day, the process. What has been revealed in the last sixty days is that we did not have a process to go through. And so, in this case, let's learn from it, let's develop a process, do it right next spring. Have it all, ducks, all our ducks in a row. I think that when you put a T, a, a, a capital T tournament on the schedule. Uh, if people have high, high expectations, and I think that if you were to broadcast it. Publicize it, it's on the calendar, first tournament of the spring, you know, April one, May one, something like that. I think you have opportunity to do it right, and so, and maybe this fall is more of a. Hey, cider and donuts, come as you are, have fun for the day, and, and, oh, I'm just, that's my suggestion. Take the pressure off.
So let's our board expand into the Rotary's, uh, agenda. Let's, uh, stay, I appreciate your comments. But, um, I don't want anyone to hear, you can't have a tournament because if someone is capable of pulling a tournament together. And they would like to, uh, pay the rental fee, wonderful. So, uh, now, um, uh, I will call one more time for a motion. If there's no motion, then we will move forward. Alright, we will move forward.
Thank you, everybody, for your conversation.
I, I think that's. So, that's a separate issue. Okay, so, a- a- and, and what Stephen said was, I think, a great one. And that, that is one of the things that Ryan and Jenna indicated, we were gonna have a tournament as well, and that was also complicating this. And I think my recommendation of Brian is that, you're right, we, that the township doesn't have one, that the township's offering. Is a cider and donuts kind of thing. That, and the, and I think that's one of the reasons why that came up is, but you're right, I, I think that we're, we're past. Our potential ability to pull that off. But I don't want to, a- a- as Mr. Gerard said, I don't want to speak for any other organization.
Alright, um, now we will look for a motion to go to closed session.
We go to a closed session pursuant to section, do I have to read the whole thing?
Yes.
Eight, one, H of the Open Meetings Act, considered material exempt from disclosure by section thirteen, one G of the Freedom of Information Act. In particular records subject to attorney-client privilege.
This is a roll call vote, so. Danielle.
Yes. Yes. Yes.
Yes, alright, we will go to the Fishbowl.
So Dan, Dan supports it?
We're gonna look for a motion to go back into open session.
Support.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, all right. Now we're gonna move on to master plan comments.
I'll get you started and then then you can go from there. So the master plan comment period is done, the public hearing was held. We only got about sixteen comments, so we sent out a few hundred emails and and that's what we got back. So that's a good sign. We did hear from some blueberry growers, we had a few of them come to the the public hearing. Concerned concerned about there is one change in particular to the future land use map there. That green section on the bottom had been rural estates residential. In the conversations that we had about agricultural preservation, about housing. I think I would say that what we what we felt happened is we surfaced a pretty significant issue or significant disparity between growers wanting to retire and the community really wanting to see blueberries continue. So there are a number of active farms yet, but there is a lot of concern among growers about continuing that. So Planning Commission was interested in hearing if the board has any thoughts or any feedback on that. I would say at this point, what we're looking at, what the master plan lays out is, hey, we found this big issue. We need to start having some ongoing conversations about it. Let the conversation ripen, see where it leads us both on the housing front and on the agriculture front. So that's my summary of the comments. I don't know if Dave would like to comment. Very good.
All right. Does anyone want to comment?
Yeah, I'll just I'll just chime in here a little bit by saying the reason that this is on the agenda is that the Planning Commission requested that this issue be discussed or at least some input provided to the Planning Commission regarding your thoughts on on this particular issue. Other words, converting or changing, if you would, a current future land use map that is currently resident or two acres rural rural residential to agriculture, which is what the current zoning is for that piece of land. Yeah, we can do that on the map.
Sure. So it was, here it is on the zoning map. You can see this is it's white on the zoning map is the ag and then this is a rural estates residential in green. Just to keep things really clear, it reverses on the future land use map. This is the area that had been designated as rural estates residential and is now designated as agriculture for the future land use map. So basically, the future land use map is saying for the life of this plan for the next five years or hopefully thereafter, but we'll see, this should remain, this should remain in agricultural use. So that's that's what that says. Yeah, this is James Street right here, and then this is Riley up here. And so it had kind of divided the block and done half and half, and this just keeps it right as using James as that boundary. This is a proposed one, this is what's in the plan currently.
In the fight that the last rectangular block there to the left, that is Bowerman Blueberries.
No, Bowerman is here, here and here, they're right here, yep. This this right here was a was rezoned just recently, that was the the drier property. Yep.
That's the corner.
Do you want to share a little bit your your proposal that if when we change this to agriculture that over the next three years, we'll spend time at the planning commission doing deep research with the farm community in in their issues as well. We just look at this whole aspect of the two dichotomies we have, i.e. the community wanting the north of James Street, so to speak, to be rural, whether that be rural estates or agriculture, it gives you the total rural feel, if you would, as compared to the farmers who are saying, I can't do this long term to farm profitable, and I need an exit. And that exit is my 401K, which I am currently farming. So we have a large group of people who are telling us one thing, and we have a small group of people that actually own that property telling us another thing.
The specifics of those next steps would come after the master plan is approved, but the intent, there's a farmland preservation committee that's intended to be set up. That committee would be working on this. We also want to start working on this infill housing concept and see what kind of progress can we make down here, identifying vacant parcels, seeing some building happening in the area where we already have utilities and roads and this that those sorts of things to support them. At the same time, we're having these conversations with farmers and exploring things like purchase of development rights programs, agribusiness, agritourism, what sorts of how how does how does this look when we pay some real attention to it over the next three years or so? That's the intent.
So don't in in some way, don't we, aren't we taking something? If if we if we go forward with this map, we're taking the right away from someone currently has it. Aren't we setting ourselves up for a potential legal suit against us because you're you're physically taking away something of value?
So under the law, the zoning ordinance is the law. The zoning ordinance says what somebody can do with their property. The zoning ordinance, in a sense, is what their vested right and the use of their property would be, not the future land use plan. So what we're talking about here is changing some of the properties that may have been designated for rural estates residential, low density residential, and putting it into agricultural for the long term planning of the township, even though it's currently zoned agricultural. So like right now, it might be zoned contrary to what it's planned to be because the plan's looking five, ten, fifteen, twenty, thirty years out into the future. And the zoning ordinance is seeing how the property is going to be used right now. So the i- i- if you were to deny the people the ability to use their property is zoned, that's where you start getting into the issue of taking, there's no vested right in what the future land use map might say. So if I were to come in to buy property in the township based upon the future land use plan, I would be like a speculator versus if I come into the township, buy property based upon the zoning, want to use my property for zoning, and all of a sudden you say you can't do that anymore. That's why we have that nonconforming status so that they can continue to use the property as it was zoned before the zoning might change. But that is entirely unrelated to the master plan, other than the fact that zoning should be based upon a plan. And right now, the plan is inconsistent in a sense with what the current zoning is because it's looking towards the future and was thinking about maybe having that be more residential use in the future. With ag zoning, you can still have residential uses, but the lot sizes are larger. So if somebody had a hundred acre farm, they could still put in ten lots. They could still be residential.
The way it's zoned today is rural residential two acre.
The way it's zoned today is agricultural.
Okay, all right, so we're not changing that.
Correct.
Portion of it. And nowhere in the plan are we changing that.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, we are not, all right, the master plan is not changing any zoning.
Okay, got it. Thank you for the question.
So so it does, I mean, I think the the question that was asked to the residents of, do you want open space in agricultural? There was a a phrase missing because I think you had to say, and I will pay for it. No, because I think you there's a there's a miss here. I I selfishly can, you know, leave my house and within a mile be in countryside. I would love to say, keep that, I selfishly say, I want to keep that the way it is. And so I think that and the end is is missing is that and I will tax myself to keep it open because I will buy the development rights, I will buy rights to keep it open. I think that's the question, I think, that that we as a board going forward and as a planning commission have to start asking tougher questions. And 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 so I I think that's the missing link here is that unless we want to pay for farmland preservation, it it certainly is a presumptuous for the residents who aren't farmers to insist to say stay farmers. I mean, I look at that last little piece, you know, that's all the way to the left, that little rectangle right there, I go like, okay, that that piece of property looks like an orphan. And if you're a farmer, and I'm sure I'm not, and this is a generalization, I'm not farmer, but you know, small farms aren't making money today and have been solidated into large farms. And so folks in the farming industry, to have a thousand acre farm, it's probably even too small. And so I even think that, you know, there has to be more research to say, okay, well, Bowerman is just too small to be competitive in the marketplace. There are people in our in West Michigan that are competitive, but maybe there's maybe there's sizes and we don't know that. And I think there's got to be more research done to actually justify our position to say, okay, you got to stay farmland. You got you have to stay that way. And so I I it's a delicate dance we're in right now, so be careful.
Yeah, I agree.
Actually, it has been asked, if you go to page two hundred and one, it says limit expansion in agricultural areas to discourage suburban residential development. And the majority strongly agree or agree. And then the next question below that is, would I support a millage to fund farmland preservation? And now it's very different. So the question has been asked, and personally, I would say, we keep it as is. And we see if people have the stomach for a millage, and if they don't, they've answered the question. And so I would I would keep it as is. I know there was a letter that came to the board that was there was a ten year plan. We have another master plan that needs to be done five years after this one. So we have plenty of time to change if we need to, but that will give us give the board time, that will give the residents of our township time to say, all right, here's what we value. And they will have to step up and 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 put their money where their mouth is, so to speak.
Exactly. I totally agree with you.
Did you want to come?
We did, you were asking about research and what do we know? That's some of the goals that we have in the proposed master plan is to do that research over the next several years so we can make it more intelligent to In the proposed master plan is to do that research over the next several years so we can make a more intelligent decision. And this is kind of a holding motion saying, okay, let's, because the, the block you've mentioned several times was future. Zone rural estates. And then when they came in, they said, it's future zone. We'd like to make that change now and the board agreed to that. And legally, um we were advised that that was the right thing to do. And that would happen to many more parcels there conceivably. So that's what this was, just like, let's. Put the brakes on a little bit while we think about it.
Yeah, I think the whole aspect of, of what we're talking about here was, was generated that. We wanted to keep the north side, so to speak, rural and, and that was the direction that was given to us. Based on the comments and, and all the uh open houses and, and various things that we received as well as this board. To do that, we, we, we made that change. In addition to that, we changed the utility boundaries. So that it is very more difficult to develop north. To, to the extent where the current pipeline coming down James Street today to feed the new subdivision that's going in. Is strictly an eight inch main instead of a 12 inch main. Uh I'm, there was opposition to that at, at the P C. I think that vote was, was. Four two, but we also had a member that was not present at the time. I, I think that's, personally, I'm going to speak as an, as a opinion here. I think that's a mistake because that. That's really set in the presidents for 50 years of a, of a, of a infrastructure that says an eight inch. We can't expand any further north. If you put in a 12 inch. Twenty years from now, 50 years from now, y- you don't have to build a new infrastructure to go north. So I, I think that's a decision that currently exists at an eight inch, but if the board thinks that. That infrastructure should be more toward a 50-year infrastructure, then I think we need to think about changing that. The, the issue with that is some degree is the perception then that we provide. To future developers, right? Well, you guys got the infrastructure built there. They're expecting to. Develop that. Well, yes, 50 years from now or 20 years from now, yeah, we may, we may think of expanding north. But immediately, no. And that's what our five-year plan says. We're not going to do that for five years. So obviously, if, if we do not change or if we go forward with. The current plan as it exists, or if there's a decision to, let's change it back to the way of the current future. Land map, land map is, that's a major impact to the master plan that will require significant rewrite.
What's the cost, cost differential between the eight and 12 on that project? Eight, eight inch versus a 12 inch. What's the cost differential?
The cost of the pipe, because you're gonna, you're gonna excavate everything one way or another, so it's, it's the cost of the pipe.
Man, I hate to, hate to have my grandchildren say, you know, grandpa, why'd you ever make that decision? That do an eight, eight inch and 50 years from now, they can't build a house. I mean, I think it's interesting, you know, concept to say, okay, if we are making decisions that someone will critique 50 years. Then tear up the road.
Now, is, is it, uh, can a pipe never be changed?
It, it can be.
You're gonna disrupt that whole uh line down James Street.
Well, there are two things, there are two things that can happen when, when you have a smaller pipe. Um and it, it has to do, the, the slope changes, not the slope and the depth change of the pipe in addition to the capacity. So when I talked to our engineer earlier this week, he said it doesn't necessarily mean that you wouldn't at all be able to develop. Further up uh that road there, I think it's 160th. Um but you, uh you would come to the point where you'd have to install a lift station sooner. So there are longer term implications. They're not necessarily irreversible, but there, there are financial implications.
As far as the size of the pipe goes, we were advised that if we do not want that land developed. Then we have to give every indication that that's what we want. It's what you were saying. I think what Terry said, if you put in the 12 inch and somebody takes us to court and says. We want to develop the land and yeah, you changed your master plan to say no, but you put in a 12 inch pipe, so you didn't really mean it. The judge made um go with them on that. So you know, you want your zoning to agree, you want your master plan to agree, you want your infrastructure to agree and say, this is, this is what we mean.
Right. Any other comments? Right. Does that give you direction?
I think, yeah, I think no.
Okay.
You have the same questions we have.
Okay, so I guess the question, have you guys struggled with uh future growth of the township?
Well, that, that's actually, we, we were talking earlier about what are the issues, housing, the two big issues from our. Master plan uh input, community input, we want to keep egg, we want housing. Well, those are not compatible. So some of the things we do, I talked about before, was moving the duplex. In the master plan, in the master plan, moving the duplex and single the smaller lots. Down to merge with the R three, the, I don't know what you call it, standard housing. Um so that then you can build eighty-five hundred square foot lots. Anywhere that it's yellow on the map, you could have smaller lots. And then there are a number of ordinance changes and we haven't looked at all those yet, but well. You might limit what the side yards are. You might change the numbers on how small a house can you build. A number of things which in our ordinances would prevent people building smaller houses on smaller lots. If we can allow those. Then we can do more infill development is the goal, which Mika was talking about earlier.
Would, would you summarize then with the input that you're interpreting from the board?
I guess what I'm hearing is that uh we need to have more conversations about agriculture as well as about housing. Um what we want growth to look like uh in that, but that this plan as drawn is okay. To continue through the planning commission process. Is that a fair, a fair summary? Yeah, I would say with where growth is concerned, I think what I have in my mind is. How do we accommodate some of these additional people coming to the area while keeping Park Township feeling like Park Township? Because that's why people are here. Million dollar question.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Just appreciate it. Just a final comment on, on this whole issue um is not in this particular issue, but. Um we gave you a copy of the summary of, of all the uh. Follow-up points or comments that were made and the one we just discussed is, is really the meat of everything that's in here. And just wanted to bring it to your attention that we're, that's, that's the big issue. So, thank you. I gave you lots of reading or Mika sent you all the comments if you wanted to read them. I hope it took you about four hours to do that, but. Uh I'm sorry about that. If, uh, that was a miscommunication on my part to Mika about what I wanted her to send you. So. Anyway, I, I hope you enjoyed that reading.
Thank you, thank you. All right. So we're going to move on to B, Beechwood Church Concerts. Uh you have a executive summary here. This is at this point strictly for discussion. And if you don't want to discuss it, we don't need to. So it's an opportunity. So does anyone want to discuss? If so, please do.
How many, uh, just have they happened already and how many are yet to go?
Uh I think there's two left.
In.
Uh in the season.
Okay.
Um let me just uh give uh a recent update. I had a conversation um. Right before the meeting, uh first time I had ever spoken with this person that is um in charge of, of or on the board of. The concert series, not the church. Um and so she and I uh chatted and. We indicated that it would be helpful for her and I um to walk the property. And go through some of the suggestions that we provided in the past. Um to kind of try to rectify some of this issue. Um I think it would be a tragedy if, if um. Uh if they uh, you know, left uh and, and felt as though that uh. Uh that uh, you know, that they were pushed out, but I also think that it's important to. Recognize that some residents feel like it's too loud and see if we can craft some strategies around some. Improvements. And so she uh seemed receptive to that. That was the first conversation I had heard had with anybody in that organization. So I think that's a, a good first step. Um one thing that is important for the board to be aware of is that our ordinance. Um and I asked Mr. Martin to kind of review this. So I, I, I would, uh if you wish, uh ask Mr. Martin for uh. A review of that, but the ordinance indicates that the timeframe of the hours uh of noise uh concern. Uh are really outside of, of those general hours that are given in the ordinance. And while, yes, there's a paragraph in there. That says um uh some things of, of you have to keep noise on your property and, and it's, you know, so it's not a disturbance to your neighbors. From a, from an enforcement perspective, really the enforcement is around those hours. Because the concert series is outside of those hours. There's really every time I get a, a residence or somebody talks to me personally or complain. I have no ability to say to the church or the concert series. You're in violation of the ordinance because technically those hours are in there. We had addressed this with the board many years ago. And the board, I think, um made a change, but didn't change the hours. They left the hours in. Uh and that's the key um that prevents us from saying, hey, this might be an issue now. Again, I think you should uh ask Mr. Martin for his, his thoughts as well.
Back in August of twenty twenty-one is, is when you modified the noise ordinance. And it was my recommendation at that time, because of the Beechwood Church issue, to take out the timeframes. Um that, that basically talks about hours of, at that time, I think it was eleven P M and seven A M. And for whatever reason, I, I don't quite remember, but look back at that time when it was before the board. The board decided not to take out those requirements, which is going to make it a little bit more difficult for you to enforce. Also around that time, there was a lot of discussion too about the, the reasonable person standard that we use versus. Specific uh decimal meters. Um you know, if, if you're looking into this, that's another thing to think about. Generally speaking, the reasonable person standards upheld by courts. But there's been at least one court that said that the reasonable person standard might be vague when it comes to a noise work. So those are things to think about, both the timing and how do you objectively decide that? This is a disturbance based upon a reasonable person standard. If, if Howard's complaining about it, is he a reasonable person? Or it doesn't have to be Dan that's complaining about it. Judges use reasonable person standard throughout the law. It's generally upheld in Michigan, but there is some concern, I think it might have been out of the Grand Rapids ordinance. So it, I, again, I, I don't remember why the board didn't follow that. Three years ago, but that's kind of where we are.
Any comments from the board? Questions? Otherwise, I might make a recommendation to you, just had a conversation with someone from the organization. Maybe we see how that conversation goes and. If we need to address it for you, you can bring it back to the board. Good. All right. Very good. Now we're going to move on to the manager's report.
Uh we're moving forward with the Veterans Memorial. Um as you can see, we removed a, a bunch of asphalt. Um of where that. New improvement is going to go. Um we're meeting with their team. And they have a project manager that's identified, and so we're going through uh the details around that project. Um Connie and I um have been working with the new community center. Um kind of in conjunction when we started talking about. Um bonding for the uh upcoming purchase of the Coast Guard Station. I also suggested to Mr. Jones and Mr. Len Pylon that we begin the conversation around. A potential bond and how financial, um uh how that would be structured from the new community center. So that when they present their recommendations to the board, that's uh something that's uh in there and all encompassing. So we've been working with um uh on that as well uh related to bond council and, and what. Uh potential language uh of those documents would look like. That's just important. It's not to say that that's happening. We're not putting the cart before the horse. When that presentation is made from Mr. Jones and his team, um that is a huge part of uh that process. And so uh we've, we've started that process. Um also know, uh it was in a recent report. Uh managers' report, but at the next September meeting, we will see a resolution on the agenda. Uh surrounding the Coast Guard Station with a notice of debt issuance. Uh to the residents, providing the residents with notice of a forty-five day period that they could in fact uh provide or come forward with a. Petition and, and, and a referendum. In my career, I've never seen it happen in our bond council and financial advisors. Career, they've only seen it happen once. Uh both uh the two of them combined and it's highly unlikely. Even if it were to happen on the Coast Guard Station, we do have the dollars to fund that improvement. Uh we're only doing the bonding for a cash flow perspective. Um but so I wanted you to be aware that that is the process uh by which uh that would end up going. And it would be a similar process with the community center. So we've been working with them on that. With respect to the cell phone tower release, I've communicated to uh the cell phone tower individual our uh follow-up offer. Um uh I won't share that because uh I, I'm certainly happy to talk with the board members if you'd like on that. But I submitted a follow-up offer and we'll see uh back. I, I had two days or day and a half off this week. So um I'm a little bit behind in terms of um of that administrative work. Um in addition to the community center from a bonding perspective, we're also looking at it also from a staffing perspective. So again, Lynn and Brian and his team have been working on that. And we've had a number of conversations and Connie and I have had a number of conversations to think about what does our staffing look like? Uh if such a facility is built and it fundamentally changes. Uh not just recreation, but uh there's a lot of changes that would happen in maintenance and our expectations of some positions would shift. Uh significantly uh with respect to such a new uh venture, a new building like that, a new piece of infrastructure. Um and it's not to say that that piece of infrastructure is why it's happening, but it creates a tipping point. Um and so we've been talking through some of that. One example of it would be, we currently have a recreation department. Um that is uh not as uh active and robust and, and um uh kind of direct with the residents. We build a facility like that, we're really going to need to invest more in a full recreation department. Uh parts and rec director, a full staff and have programming uh around that facility, not just. Uh sort of pass-through model of programming, but have our own staff, our own programming, our own content. That is coming out of that facility to uh uh help make that facility a success. If the residents end up supporting that with a, a larger expenditure. And then lastly, uh the uh prairie, um it did get seeded, as you all know, there will be another seeding. Excuse me, not seeding. Uh will be another uh uh treatment for the weeds. Uh and uh soon the, the fall seeding uh will be uh commencing for that prairie facility. Um with that, I will take any questions if you have them.
All right, hearing none, we'll move on to public comment. We'll start on this side, front row. Come on up.
Good evening, gentlemen and ladies. Um my name is Christian Kleinjans. I'm a resident of Holland Township, but I am also the district county commissioner for the second district. Of the county, which encompasses the fourth precinct of Park Township. And as I promised you two months ago, I said I'd be stopping by and. I don't mean to stop by every time you have closed session. That's really weird. Uh just a, nothing really to report. It's been a quiet a couple of months since I was here in June. Um up at Fillmore, uh mostly because there was a primary election coming and everyone wanted to kind of like be super chill. Um with the primary coming up, which was last Tuesday, and we've all seen the results of that. So. Um November's coming forward and we'll see how things turn out. November's coming forward and we'll see how things turn out. As of, as of the last couple of weeks, though, the budget for the county was just released today. It, at today's finance committee meeting, I did just check. It wasn't on the website nor in the packet for the meeting when we had the meeting, but it's there now. So it's available for review and we will be scheduling the public commentary period for that probably at our board meeting next week. So I encourage everyone, if you've got questions, it's a, it's, it's a rather encompassing thing. And I'm still trying to figure this stuff out, having been the commissioner for the fourth precinct for all of about a hundred days. So other than that, nothing much going on. I do want to point out that as has been a really interesting one year and eight months. Personally, as, as a new commissioner, I'll sort of be watching sort of what goes on in the period between now and January, when we see the new board, in particular. There's been some commentary that I've heard while I've been doing doors in the area that, that Tuesday represents an extended lame duck session for anything that anyone might want to do. So, you know, having put that there, I do want to recognize that that's, that if you've thought that, we've thought that, that you're not the only ones. So we're, I'm saying, doing my level best for the residents that I serve and the constituents I've served, had lots of good conversations over in the fourth this last week when I was knocking on doors. And this was a great meeting. This piece about, about your master plan was exceptionally was very rewarding as this type of thing moved to a countywide level is something that I'm very adamant about. I agree with some of the commentary that I've heard here that we need to start discussing what we want to look like as a county in 2050 right now and not wait for it to get to us. We need to run to meet, we need to start the discussions to meet it. So this was very nice. Thank you very much. And I won't take up any more of your time.
Thank you. All right. All right. We're going to close public comment and we're going to move on to board comments. Trustee Cerny.
ZBA did not have a meeting. Of course it got moved to this coming Monday, but there's nothing on the agenda. So no meeting. The fair. They say numbers are up, but it takes a while to figure all that out. But they said the gate numbers were up, the grandstand numbers were up and all those people. So I'm going to try to get someone from the fair board here next month to let you guys know how it all went.
Okay, very good. All right. Wonderful. Thank you. And Treasurers, take it in.
Our main transportation meeting was canceled this month, so there's no report on that. And I just want to say, I've been here thirty five years today, just my thirty fifth anniversary with the township. And it's been a pleasure and I'm so happy to.
Thank you.
Happy to work with you.
Great. That's wonderful. Okay. Trustee DeHun.
Yes. True things from the planning commission were passed at this last meeting. The first one has to do with the final phase, if you would, of the reserve at McTaw. The hysteria sidewalk. We finally got that resolved in terms of where it will be and what trees are coming out. That got to be a long process. Met quite a bit of neighbors that were upset that there was a path going in, but that was part of the PDU that they would do that as part of the arrangement with, with us of, of giving us the pocket park as well as that path. And so we're going forward with that. And we probably are seeing some, some work done in the very near future because they want to get that done and finish up the Wester, the reserve at, at McTaw, so they can button that down, so to speak. The second item that would pass was a special use report or a special use for a new twenty four by twenty pavilion at the park that is in Idlewood subdivision. That's actually a private park by the association. And so because it actually is not identified as a private park, it needed to come through the board to get approval for them to build that pavilion. And so we approved that. Should be a really nice addition to that. They're totally revamping that, that park can be a really nice addition to that subdivision. And then the final item we did was another special use permit for gun sales at a piece of property that's on the very east end of Quincy Avenue. We had quite a bit of resistance to that by neighborhoods, neighbors in the area as well as the new addition to the legends is, is probably a half mile away from that. There are two issues there. One is from a personal property rights situation. And the other is the, the business of selling, selling weapons. The personal issue of it is the individual has a weapons range. And he has all the rights to use that weapons range. And of course that creates noise, but he has all those rights. And so there was, and then there was the request for special use that allows him to sell guns as well as ammunition, as well as manufacturer, as well as repair weaponry. There was consider, consideration that the neighborhoods really mix those two items together and they're needed to be completely separate. And the planning commission approved the special use and has six separate conditions. In addition to that, those conditions range from, from having all the appropriate licenses and this sort of thing. He can only have gun sales that are by appointment. And he can only do them in his house and put a specific office in his house or in a barn that he has next on the property. He has ten acres there. It's a pretty good sized piece of land. Fully woods and this sort of thing. So I think that was a good decision by the planning commission to allow that. There's really no, really no reason not to allow him to do that. And that was a six zero boat. All three of these were all six three, six zero boats. Do I have any questions on that? If not, I'd like to just congratulate Steve and Joan, Jim, Brian, Lauren, and of course Shar. And especially to Jan, who ran a great campaign and handedly defeated her challenger. Wish each of you continued success as each of you execute the trust of the people who have bestowed this to you to each, to continue to enhance this great municipality we call Park Township. Congratulations to each of you.
Thank you, Terry.
Thank you.
Right. Trustee Jones.
Sure. The, the Community Center Committee has been meeting. We are in the process of pulling a lot of information together from the summer activities and the spring activities. More importantly, we're really working hard on capital costs, if you will, right now. Understanding all these things have a cost associated with them. What do those costs look like? And all that information will be presented at the upcoming work session that we have at the end of the month. Along with those costs, we're also pairing up operational costs. So we're going to have some deep discussions around. It's great to have this thing. What's it going to cost to operate this thing? What is the upkeep going to look like? So we're really trying to put together a holistic package around, not just the building, but how's it going to operate? What does that look like? What does that cost? And then get the, the board input around that. We're really trying to scope this thing as far as understanding boundaries. And then so that we're ultimately going to present back to the, the public as a whole. And then work on next steps as well. Really forward to that meeting at the end of the month.
The end of this month, right? Thirty?
Twenty nine. So, all right.
The CEP did not meet, but we're meeting next week. Also just encourage you, if there's organizations that you hear or are like us to focus on, certainly send them our way, or I will be happy to sit down with someone and show them how to apply for a CEP grant. So please do that. Different notes, you hear the word Geneva camp and retreat, we're not, I'm not going to bring up the infamous twelve feet. But they will be breaking ground for probably the one most significant buildings we have going up in Park Township next month. After the camp ends, they will be putting up a breaking ground for the multi set, a multi purpose building that's on the Pine Side. And as soon as I get information about the date and the time, I will forward it to the board and encourage your attendance. Because we have been part of that PUD and that, that process there for many, many years. And so it's pretty exciting addition on that side. And if we had a couple of us there, I think they would appreciate that. So I will forward that to you when I get the actual time and date. So also I had made an overture about becoming a heart safe community and I'd encouraged our board to be heart safe. I'm just wondering if on the September meeting, if possible, between the, the chief and Howard, if we could figure out if we wanted to come a half hour early and do a little training? If that would be possible on your schedule to, to do that at six o'clock and we do a little CPR training and, and become heart safe as a board and demonstrate that we are serious about becoming a heart safe community, if that would work out.
Can we do it within a half hour?
Chief, is it?
Take an hour.
Take an hour?
I thought it was an hour.
Was it an hour? Okay. Well, if we'd be willing to show up at five thirty, I, I would be willing and I, I just. I, I don't want to make the assumption, but maybe if it doesn't work, maybe we do October. But I, I think we got to deliver on our, on our promise. And I was, I was struck by, by that again. I had a gentleman at bike ride yesterday and I said, how's your biking going this summer? He says, well, it's going pretty well, but we lost a friend who had a heart attack on a mountain bike trail. And, and so I was reminded about, you know what, if that happened to be on a trail and I'm sure I know how to do it correctly. So I, I have a sense of urgency to, to get this done. So. Okay. Thank you. Thank you for.
I did, I was not able to attend the MAC meeting. Clerk Keeter attended in my absence. Continue to remember Clerk Keeter. So in prayers and we miss him tonight, but certainly understand why.
His, the, his Jane's funeral is Saturday at ten, no, eleven. Yeah. Yes, thank you. Ten visitation, eleven. Third, third reformed downtown Holland.
All right. And then we, it's been mentioned, the work session on August twenty nine. Trustee Jones had a idea. I thought it was a good idea if there's consensus among the board, we're not going to vote on it. But is there general consensus to have the new board members that are joining us attend this particular meeting? Because they are going to be making some decisions on this. So.
I would hate for us to have to go through all this information again. It'd be great to have them be a part of the discussion.
If you would make sure the new candidates know that.
I wouldn't, I will let them know. I just, I can see Dan's face and I just want to say, wow, they can be in the audience.
Right, right.
They can, okay.
They can't participate, but they can be here.
They can be, they can talk, we can, you can relax the rules. It's just, right.
Right. Yep.
Are they all ready for the polls?
No.
So then I would invite both sides.
Oh, okay. Well, all right. You, you've been invited. But, oh, was she? Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't, I didn't realize it wasn't ignoring you. I just didn't, didn't know. So, all right. So, yeah, so to be fair, make a phone call to everyone.
What time is that?
It's six thirty. Yep. So, all right.
I love this board and I love this. I, I, thank you. In my twenty some odd years, I've never seen, never had that happen. That's, that's good government. Thank you.
Great idea. So thank you. All right. With that, we will look for a motion to adjourn.
I would like to make a motion to adjourn.
Support.
All those in favor say aye. Aye opposed. Great. Thank you all. Appreciate it.